Good evening, everyone, both here in person at Borough Hall and online via Zoom. Welcome to the continuation of the Hopeful Borough Council January 2 reorganization and regular meeting. For everyone who's not on council or professionals, at six o'clock, we started the meeting with an executive session. There was no action taken, and we will now resume our public part of the meeting with our oaths of office. If you're watching again online or here, we did start with the flag salute. I don't think we missed it, but we did open a meeting with that earlier when we started for executive session. We're now resuming the meeting, which is item seven, if you're following on the agenda, the public, assuming the public session. And we'll start with the two oaths of office for ceremonial oaths of office for Deborah Steeler, her reelection, and then for Anthony Fuller on his election center. So let's kind of where we were before. So you have the flag. Bob, you're next to her. And just as a, you know, showmanship item, I'll note that that thing there is broadcast into people on Zoom. And we obviously have people here. So your angle is probably perfect so that people online can see it. So we, I'll say we practiced this before, but let's, Deborah, do you want to repeat after me? I, Deborah Steeler.
I, Deborah Steeler.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the government established in the United States.
And this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I further solemnly affirm.
I further solemnly affirm.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all of the duties.
Perform all of the duties.
Of the office I'm about to enter.
Of the office I'm about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Thank you. Anthony, if you'd like to join me. Happily volunteer for you to raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Anthony Fuller.
I, Anthony Fuller.
Do solemnly swear, do solemnly swear, that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the government established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I further do solemnly swear.
I further do solemnly swear.
Faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All of the duties of the office I'm about to enter.
All of the duties of the office I'm about to enter. So help me God. So help me God.
Thank you.
We will. Sign and. Thank you so much. I'll now open the floor for nominations of council president for the 2025 year.
I would like to nominate Councilman David Mackey with his years of service to the community entities and several of the issues facing the current time. I think that he is an excellent choice for president 2025.
Hey, Krista, do we have a second?
I have a second.
Any other discussion or nations? Not a, I'll take a roll call or by affirmation, all those in favor of Xman Mackey's retirement as council president for the year.
Hi.
Hi. Are you opposed? Now, this evening's meeting is a little different than our normal meetings. We have many opportunities for public comment. And without need to restrict anyone, I'm going to open up the first portion of the meeting for public comment. And I think this would be an excellent time if anyone had any comments about the representation part of the meeting or about a denomination that we just had, this would be a great time for it. Of course, you can comment about anything, but there will be two other times this evening for comments about general things, about business items that we are having. So with that, happy to open the meeting to the public for comments, for the comment, both in person or if you're online, feel free to push the raised hand button. I've seen none on either. I'll take a motion to close the public comment for this first of many, I assure you, public comment opportunities. We got a motion, we have a second. All in favor? All right, thank you so much. As a kind of point of personal privilege, I just have a couple of, you know, just things to say here on our organization. Good evening and Happy New Year to everyone. Congratulations, Deb and Anthony, and you're swearing in, and really thank you to both. Along with all of our volunteers who are interested in serving this community, if we could, let's just give them both a round of applause and thank you. I also want to thank and recognize Councilwoman Krista Weaver, first since council president 2024. Her guidance and leadership, particularly in taking the gavel on one of our most challenging topics we've had, particularly one where I had to reach myself and she had to run the meetings, was and is particularly invaluable and above and beyond the normal call of duty for council president. I'll say, as a fellow volunteer of school-aged children, I know the toll that that commitment can take. And half of everyone here in the borough, I thank and applaud for doing it. And while still finding the time to land us one of the biggest pedestrian safety grants issued in the entire state of New Jersey, being the driving force behind our safer downtown for our residents, businesses, and visitors. You know, when we look back at our successes and challenges to the community, her efforts in regard really topped the list this year. And these are generational positives that we have accomplished and look forward to. From our 25 mile an hour speed limit to more than $1.5 million in state funds we will soon get to spend on safety improvements around Hopeful. So if those who join me in thanking. Couple more just thank yous up and down here the day. I just want to thank Councilwoman Millenius for efforts towards our environmental and business initiatives. Our Green Team has accomplished, and I see we have some other Green Team representatives here, has accomplished so much this past year, and that momentum continues to grow. Our downtown has been beautified with plantings, generations, that is through efforts of our environmental community and business community. And bringing these groups together, our downtown is being elegant on so many of those behind it. Thank you. A previous being family obligation, you know, in your first year, she has had so much to be proud of, and we have to be thankful for her. Her coming into building relationships has and will continue to pay dividends for this community. Councilwoman Steeler, I'm thankful for what you've done in your two terms. And thank you for continuing on with a third, and I'm very excited what comes next. Your work to bring our community together with events and with help our businesses and grounds will continue to benefit residents, businesses, and visitors alike. This year, we'll have a chance to focus on Public Works complex, and your guidance and input will continue to be instrumental as it has with everything we've done from our library system on down. So thank you. Captain President Mackey, honored to say that for the first time. Your knowledge, leadership, and dedication from your first days of service, some 25 years ago, is very valuable. In 2025, we'll be tackling as a community really one of those questions that we will ever have to face. I could not imagine addressing the affordability of our drinking water with your leadership. On redevelopment, on affordable housing, on Public Works building, it's a very long list. And I look forward this year to you helping to shape our agenda as a town, as we come together to put our best foot forward and solve these problems together. David, thank you. For our team of professionals, many of whom or others were here earlier for executive session. Thank you for all the time and content that you put in. Doug and Reggie, we are so lucky to have you here, many in order, not just with expertise, but your commitment to our residents and businesses. Doug, in particular, take us extra time to meet with people and businesses at wacky hours and even at times bringing donuts. I'll say, no one. I don't understand it. I love donuts. People don't seem to like donuts, but nonetheless, we keep springing. And we're honestly very thankful for all you, our entire team at DPW, our professionals, Reggie, Christine, we are very lucky to have one team here, and I'm personally thankful and I know we all are. 2025 will be challenging, but I have every confidence that the people of this community, led by my friends and colleagues on both sides of this table, will continue together and show the caring, inclusive, and welcoming place that Hopeful Borough has always been. As we had in 2024, everything that we do, one eye towards being as inclusive and open as we can. But putting our meetings online, inviting Doug via Zoom, having engagements and hours when it works for residents and not our arbitrary schedules, that's our way. We are writing our history here, but it will continue to be one of special meetings, better communications, and more input. It's not possible for everyone to agree on every topic, but we can all agree to listen, to share and act with compassion that brings people to this special place. Our inclusivity, affordability, and our environment, this is the year where the next decades are shaped. We will darken our skies in 2025, but raise up the light on everything we do as a community and everything we can. To our volunteers here in the room and online and in your homes tonight, I cannot thank you enough. This year, we will be leaning on your time, talent, but I honestly pray much less of your treasure than we have in the past. More affordable. I wish everyone a wonderful new year with gratitude and excitement about what we can do this year together. So thank you all. Thank you. We'll get to our next piece of our reorganization. I'd love to entertain our 13, a motion to approve resolutions 2002 through 2006 for our reorganization schedule. We have seconds?
I have a second.
Deb, second? All in favor? No, we gotta do it wrong.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. Mackey?
Yes.
Ms. Steeler?
Yes.
Ms. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Flanis?
Yes.
Next, I'll take a motion to confirm appointments A for Q. With the extended apologies to my colleagues and Miss Pyle for bearing with me this past week. I tend to have more time to more personally talk about certain things. So to be said, these are anything beyond what we're expecting, it is with an open nation that we continue discussing and figure out the appropriate places for every. With that, I would love to take a motion to confirm the appointments. So.
I'll start.
All in favor?
Bye.
Bye. Thank you. So that concludes the first meeting. Our reorganization part of the meeting will now turn to our regular monthly business. And with that, I will open the motion, I will move the, open the meeting to the public, excuse me. And while we had a comment opportunity before, we have this one, and certainly we'll have another one later in the meeting. But now's a perfect opportunity for anyone here in person or online to make a comment or ask a question. So please come up to the front. And I'll just be, don't need your address, but name for the record and welcome.
Scott Fuller. I was just reappointed to the Green Team. And I am here in part about the Green Team. I'm gonna steal a little bit of Heidi's comment for later. We have a potluck coming up. Just want to announce that. It'll be on January 26th at the railroad station from 5:00 to 7:00. And it's gonna have an optional puzzle swap at that meeting, and we're gonna invite everybody to come and maybe get involved in the team.
And there's a flyer in the back of the room.
And there was something else about that thing. Maybe I'm the other thing I'm here for, which is the Harvest there. So now I'm on the Green Team. I'm on the Harvest Fair. I'm on the council, I'm the vice president of the Harvest Fair, and we have a potluck also coming up. It'll be on Sunday, the 12th of January, at the Hopeful Presbyterian Church from 2:00 to 4:00. And here, we're gonna be recruiting, hopefully, some volunteers to join the, join the planning committee. We need lies on the planning committee. So that's what we're gonna have, our first little recruiting potluck. I don't think we're calling it zero weight, because we're gonna have plates, cups, napkins provided, but bring a snack. So that's really all I'm here to make sure everyone's aware of. So get the word out that we're gonna have this coming up real soon. And then, now I remember, the Green Team thing. The Green Team thing that we want to talk about is also coming up in February. It's the scrap metal collection that we're gonna do in conjunction with the Hope Pro and Hope Well, I'm sorry. Panter Bro and Hope Well Tenth. We're gonna be doing this jointly at Hope Well Church Public Works, collecting scrap metal from 12:00 to 3:00 on the Saturday before the Super Bowl. So just getting that out. That's really all I'm here to talk about.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your many hats. And I can force you down, I don't know if it's too early, it's been set, and maybe that's what the planning does, but is there a date yet for possible, for Harvest Fair? If you are, if we're calendar people and want to make sure we're not.
I think we did. We just double check. It's September.
And you're welcome to chair, else boys, I didn't mean to.
I think it was gonna be September 21st, but we're gonna, I'll double check.
Okay, thank you.
And will there be your hats for sale?
Well, there's only one way to get that hat.
Yes.
Oh, you gotta volunteer.
I was volunteer, yeah, for a while. This is one Heidi, Ms. Chair.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll open the meeting again to online, push your raised hand button or if you're in person. Not seeing any, I'll take a motion to close this next public session to the public. Slightly out of order, I think this might be a misread or agenda on my part, apologies. But we have committed and will continue to do any meetings going forward, a brief update on anything involving our water system. Tonight, on our agenda, there will be a couple things involving the potential sale of our water system. We have a resolution accepting essentially the qualifications of three different companies that responded to our RFQ, request for qualifications, that we will be moving forward, and then we'll be releasing an RFP, a request for proposals to those three companies for them to put together their possible interest and proposal to us for us to evaluate. So that would, after tonight, go out with a, with a plan that we would have, those is back by the end of this month, if I have that correct. Following that, council and the water committee will evaluate and have an opportunity to pick one that we think is worth discussing terms with and enter into negotiations. Following which, if council believes that we could get to a place that is worth advancing, we would essentially advance those terms to a point where we could potentially have a breton on a double sale in November of this year, November 25. General budget. That would be the general schedule with a lot of work for council and our professionals and the water committee to do in the coming months. But that would be, those updates, I see it, Krista, David, anything else you'd like to, Dad? Thank you. We, I guess I, I took the idea out of whatever, I suppose that's how it might then, right? Item four, we have a report of our works and water sewer staff on our packet. Any questions on those, maybe direct to our administrator at this point? If not, I would happily take item five as a minutes from the December 5 meeting. I'm gonna take a motion from anyone who is eligible. Our newest member was not at that meeting, so it's not available, but I think, right? I don't want to surprise someone with the opportunity, but so with that. All right, we have a second. Any question or comments, changes? Otherwise, all in favor? All right, I'll close. Thank you so much. Our next two items are first readings of ordinances. These are items that we start tonight and have public hearings on with specific comment, question opportunities at our February meeting. First, item six, ordinance 892 for disabled veteran deduction. Reggie could read that one by time.
An ordinance to the code of the Borough of Hopewell, Mercer County, State of New Jersey, to add disabled veteran property tax incentive.
Doug, if you can get up with the explanation on this one, I believe this is a state program that has been only fully implemented by the borough, and this kind of closes the loop and.
Yeah, what we're doing is we're making, it's for the year that you thought. So we're not looking in the reverse, you can come in and go back four or five years for the time.
There was a. I guess up until reading of the way it had been implemented, that if you were to ask for it now, that you might be able to go by time and get a considerable back years, which would be very expensive. I'll take a motion to introduce ordinance 892.
I'll motion.
Second, second, right? All roll.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. Mackey?
Yes.
Ms. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Flanis?
Yes.
This next one, first reading of 893. Reggie, wanna read this one by title?
An ordinance of Borough Hopewell, County Mercer, New Jersey, regarding water, fire hydrant, and sewer rates, and standby fire connection fees, and amending chapters 10 and 17 of the revised general ordinances of the Borough of Hopewell, 1975.
So I'll make an attempt, and then I will use my colleagues who will want to be to help make sure that I didn't miss it. But our, our rates, those are two-step process. We have on our books, by ordinance, a range where we can set the rates by resolution. The introduction of this ordinance would allow us in February to change the ranges, but without separate action, not necessarily change the rates themselves. If those of you following our efforts to allocate what we think is fair, these expenses between frankly, our biggest water users, the business community and residents. We made a change at the end of last year, essentially lowering the rates as much as we could for our biggest users. And we actually hit the limit in our ordinance of where we could reduce them. The new rate structure would give us more flexibility to potentially lower those further. To do that, we would have to raise rates on our other customers, as well as look at other parts of our program that are, you know, essentially outdated, whether it's the standby water pipes or hydrants, to ensure that when we, if we were to change them in the future, that it matches our, our ordinance. David, Krista, Doug?
No, I think that's, I think you encapsulated it, and just, you know, the as far as hydrant fees, we have penalty hydrant fee for, those are charged to the fire district. Or we, right now, we have a range in the bottom of zero. So in other words, you don't necessarily have to impose fire hydrant fees. The larger utility, such as New Jersey, or how you, most other water systems do. It's something that we might potentially phase in, in a gradual way, because we don't want to add a, you know, substantial budget item to the fire district, but at the same time, it helps you pay for the, maintaining the infrastructure and so on. So, so this is designed with a range at the upper level, of which is the highest we were ever going, the lower is zero. And by resolution, this gives us the option of doing that at a period of time and an appropriate level, having been worked in concert with the fire district, so that, you know, nobody's surprised. And the same is true with, so we have these standby fire connection fees, which apply to tickler systems. And right now, we haven't actually been charging for that service, and we still may not. It's hard to know. But again, we're building in flexibility in the rate structure to do that. And, and then again, as you said, with our rates for actual water usage, we've expanded the ranges to give us more flexibility. As we, and this is also important because if we do go down the path of actually selling the water utility, that'd be the question of what our rates are at the time of sale. And what's negotiated in terms of future rates. And so our objective is obviously to have the lowest rates that we can have now. But we also want to make sure that whatever we have in place, if we sell the system, is the lowest possible. It just, it gives us flexibility to balance costs as well. Which is really what you just said, but anyway.
And we don't set the actual rates until.
No, right. Right, right. And the beauty of the structure is that, so the, the rate ordinance, which obviously, you know, is a two-step process with introduction and public hearing and adoption. Want to set those ranges, as long as they're broad enough to encompass whatever we would do, we can by resolution change the rates.
Within that range.
Within that range, whatever we want to, as a single step process through a vote. So that, that's, gives us the flexibility to do all that. And so it's a good system.
I'll say that flexibility, apologies to anyone else if this was not Doug's idea, I think it was. So thank you for tuning us into this concept, because it's, it's the flexibility that allowed us to act at the end of last year in time to change, adjust our rates before bills are, and if we don't have these ranges, we will, you know, there's a very short period where we can look at something to actually affect something before you get a bill, which happened every, every quarter. And so it allowed us to right-size things a bit better at the end of last year, and will continue to give us that flexibility. We, I don't know if there's specifically a recommendation yet, we'll work on one, then from the water committee. But we would have the opportunity in February to make another adjustment that would hit before a future bill.
Right. Oh, and also, so sewer rates are also a part of this as well. And so I'll just mention that briefly, unless you, if you want to talk about sewer, okay. So it's a modest, it's a change in the ranges, again, that would allow us to impose a modest increase in the sewer rate. And, and that's a part to do two things. One, we have manhole frame arrangements on streets that we have to do, which are related to our stormwater need, and also controlling what we call infiltration inflow, which is stormwater coming into the sewer system, blowing the pipe and going to the treatment plant that nobody wants to pay to treat, and shouldn't be going there. So we also have other, what we call INI projects, that we need to be, there's, interestingly enough, on, on the large distribution system, you're always concerned about water, the terms of losing water. With the sewer collection system, you're concerned about rainwater, some stormwater coming into the system, because it's essentially adding to the flow and, and increasing our costs, and also increasing the burden on the treatment plant. So that's a constant process of, of looking for leads, trying to mitigate those as well, and sometimes using video cameras and so on. So this is giving us some flexibility to increase the revenue a little bit for Zoomers, a modest increase to much support those efforts.
With that, I'll take a motion to introduce 893. Yeah. So.
Deb's got no Deb.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. Mackey?
Yes.
Ms. Steeler?
Yes.
Ms. Weaver?
Yes.
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 Our next, on our consent agenda, um. Resolutions twenty twenty five through thirty. I'm happy to, to take any, any of these out, if anyone has a question, so I might show it in a particular, otherwise I, um, would take a motion, um. To approve by consent, uh, twenty seven through three.
So maybe just. A quick discussion on.
Twenty nine, yeah.
Yeah, I thought that would be, so, so item resolution, uh, twenty twenty five, twenty nine is designation of qualified response, so that is. Uh, taking action, we, as, as Ryan explained, we've got a RFQ or aggressive qualification. For potential, um, uh, buyers, interested buyers for the water system, um, and. We review their applications, I know their application, but their credentials, I should say. And, um, and our professionals did as well, both from a fiscal standpoint and an engineering standpoint and legal standpoint, and, um. I think we all determined, basically, all three of them meet our, meet the qualifications, so this is. You're not appointing anybody, you're somebody that they are now qualified, uh, to receive an actual request for a proposal. Uh, because that's, it's a two step process, so, uh, this would be a determination that they've met the qualifications, and I believe also in their lease, it, it, it authorizes. Us to issue the RFP, correct, or it also. Right, that, that's, so, and so the next step is, uh, which is going to happen pretty soon. Is to actually send out the request for a proposal to those same three respondents. And that starts the clock, it leaves one month for them to respond and to provide us with proposals.
So there are this number in our. Not here, I don't know if that matters for the formal process, right?
I think it's, 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 it's.
It's twenty thirty five. We received, but it's twenty nine in here, so I don't know if that matters.
Uh, so, sorry, you, you're, the, the agenda looking at is that the form of resolution had a different number from the distribution?
Um, so I mean, the, yeah, for the formal, uh, reply response is twenty five thirty.
Sorry, I, I, I don't know what you're looking at, so you're looking at the, a printed copy or electronic copy of the resolution itself. As compared to the.
Yeah.
So. I, I think, I.
I don't know if it matters, so.
I, I think that we just added a few items, um, since that was distributed, is what I guess.
Yeah, there's no, there's no twenty nine in one, right?
Okay, done, but, well, I, I don't.
Mine has a little version that is.
So.
There were, there were a lot of. Okay.
So.
It's twenty nine here.
So.
I'm sure the resolution is so sorry.
What's, what's?
They're all littered.
I'm sure, I'm sure they're in your book, just don't want to hear the issue.
Um, I'm sure if there was a discrepancy, we'd be able to adjust it.
Get out, yeah.
Um, with, uh, just two other kind of notes, following what, what David said, you know, when we started this process. Uh, weren't sure what interest there would be in it, and, um, we now, tonight are qualifying three different companies, uh. And that there's, there's nothing, this is, there's no reason, uh. Not to share this, but New Jersey American, Aqua and Viola, um, the three largest, um. Companies in New Jersey have all extra interest and, um, in participating and, and looking at our system, which, uh, certainly, our goal was to have. Competition and to, you know, if we are going to offer a. Uh, a choice here to make sure that we had the best, um, option and the best deal, so to speak, for the community considered, and having three respondents is, is certainly a great step towards that, so. Krista, David, our officials for, for everything that they've done to. Get thrown out and have three different companies show interest in the process.
And working RFP, which has been a Herculean task.
Lots of.
Again, the team has been amazing on this then.
Uh, so with that, I'll take a motion to, um. Uh, of twenty seventh, right, I believe thirty, but, uh, to whatever the number should be.
Yeah.
All right, Anthony, yeah, okay.
Okay.
All roll call.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. Mackey?
Yes.
Ms. Steeler?
Yeah.
Ms. Weaver?
Yeah.
Ms. Williams.
Yes.
Well, next take a motion, not your proof claims for payments, by roll call. I can write eventually. Okay, so we, we do, sorry, we're, this is item eight, right?
Yeah.
Right, but we, 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 oh, that's right, I, I, we were talking about this, yes, we, we, we didn't pull it out, so we. Sorry, sorry, just to recover, yep, yeah, got it, um, sorry, uh, sorry, with the motion to.
We need a second. I'll start.
Yeah, all right.
Ms. Fuller?
Yes.
Ms. Steeler?
Yes.
Ms. Weaver?
Yeah.
Ms. Williams.
Yes.
Uh, this has been an evening of many public comment opportunities, and I'm going to use my rigor, add a seventeenth to it, um. And invite our, our neighbor and county commissioner, uh, two of our county commissioners, actually, unless they're about to tell me that there's. More people in the thing left, then I'll, I'll go slower, um, but, um, I'm happy to open the floor, um, to, to, uh, to our, our two guests here. Uh, and thank them for, for joining us, uh, this evening on behalf of our, our reelected and new councilor, so if you want to. Do, come up front, uh, if you wouldn't mind coming closer to the, the podium, we have a, a camera, uh, in the center here that should capture you for, for online.
Here?
That'll, that'll do it.
Um.
Always, always wanted to at least stop through, especially during reord, uh, to let you guys know how special you guys are to us, so. You guys do good work here in Hopewell Borough, I always want to make sure that you guys know that we're watching at the county level, anytime you guys, uh, we're here. I, I said years ago, that people always talk about, uh, politics, the real, the real magic of politics is. Making sure that you have somebody's phone number that you can call when things go wrong, right? And so we want to make sure we're always connected with, with you all, uh, and the work that you do here, and we're really grateful for the work that you do here, Borough. Making sure that you're connected with the rest of the county, so, uh, congratulations, once again, for this victory.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I, I really can't add much, except that you guys really have. I, I've just been seeing things chopped off the list that has been running in Hopewell Borough's collective minds for all the time, and I now, I, I mean. I see almost every week, we are voting on something Hopewell Borough related, where the county and the borough intersect, so. Um, you guys are getting a phenomenal amount of work done for your residents, I see. The Wubble community, I see that, you know, coming to an even brighter fruition as I try to slow down. Just slow down.
I was crawling on my way.
Um, thank goodness that the kennel that we stay is a little bit outside of town, so I didn't have to approach too much further, but you guys are doing a phenomenal job. Uh, we really are so happy to have you as part of our county, because you are great to work with, and, um. We be, uh, you know, you know where, you know where I live, and.
And you also know that she is sworn in as the chair of the Mercer County Board of Commissioners on Monday.
Opportunity and, and, you know, thank you, Sam, for that, um, having been a mayor, uh. For a couple of years, came during a really difficult time in world's history. Uh, where the connections of governmental levels was the critical piece to serving your community. Um, I have told, um, I have told our board, and I have told, uh, business administrator and anyone else who are listening. That, uh, I have two main. Objectives this year that I'd like to further, and one is to increase shared services between the county and our municipalities, um. I think there was a little bit of a lack of that at the time, uh, in twenty twenty, and we. But we had an opportunity to reinvent that partnership in ways that makes sense for each community, um, because it's not going to be the same for all of them, and then. Directly out of that experience, um, getting our health department to be a leader in the community, rather than. Kind of the, the behind the scenes. Support staff that it has played that role for a while, so, um, if there are more ways that Hopewell Borough. Would like the county to stand side by side with them. Call me, because that's what for me this is about.
Thank you.
You say your names.
Sorry, Kristen McLaughlin.
Samuel Frisbee.
Can I say something for you guys?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
I just wanna say, when he was so again for support with Laura and his women and having the bright hands on red. When I speak about our assets outside of Mercer County, they're like, how did you get that to happen? And I used to say, we we have amazing people in the county. And they've been such a pleasure to work with, so thank you.
Thank you for uh touching and agreeing with us on that one. We never do anything that a municipality doesn't want done. Uh but we had the right partner in our county executive, because as you know, we've been fighting about that for probably six, seven years. But the right county executive at the right time, we said, no, make sure that.
We had with two, we had two changes this year, the new county executive and we had a personal counsel uh pushing it through. So we're we're very, very excited. Um uh oh, thank you, guys. Um I want to please extend our thanks to the county executive. Uh their whole team, not just this week, you know, we've been working with the engineering office, for example, on on these very issues. They are there with us. Um at every step and we're very, very thankful. I'll 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 say this out loud, so that I remember to do it last year. I know you guys have been racing. It was a straight line, though, for getting to the town to here. Um I I will, um I I talked to uh uh Mayor Peters Manning uh earlier today and we will take it upon ourselves to make sure that we. Coordinate a a little bit uh better for next year's subject and.
Sixty minutes would be great.
Hey, look, you guys know you wait, and the wife was being sworn in and training, so I was there first.
It's linear.
Who's there?
Set the county out to this again here. Both so much. Uh please extend our thanks and appreciation to uh to the rest of the the board members and and the entire team of the county.
Yeah.
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 Thank you. Since it was a reopen public commission, I'll certainly uh extend the the continued courtesy of anyone else would like to say something. Your person or raise your hand in line before I take a motion to close this. Uh I think seventeenth of eighteen of all the common sessions of our time. Uh seeing none, I'll take that motion. Uh seconds, seconds, all of favor. All right. Uh next item on our agenda, um is our Borough Council Liaison Reports, um uh because Anthony just started. Um I'll start with him and just to uh know that there's something that we're expecting you to have said or done at this point, but if you. Yours, um if if anyone would like to to say, and uh just from my perspective, I'm sure from everyone here on both sides of the dais. Welcome, thank you for your service here. We're very excited, Derek.
Well, thank you very much. And just briefly, I really appreciate the opportunity to join the council. I think, as Ryan said before. Twenty twenty-five will bring some significant decisions for the borough, and I think it's a huge privilege to be here at this time. Um I think that it's easy to get lost in some of the procedural details and some of the the facts and kind of. Deep data behind some of the questions. I think what we need to also remember the human and the community aspect of these big decisions, because some of the things we're facing this year. I think will have repercussions for years, even generations to come. So it's a very exciting time to be on council, and I appreciate all the support I've had from everybody on council so far, the people who. Help me learn books, looking forward to working with the staff of the borough as well, and of course, to to remain in communication with the entire community. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Um, Dan, wanna go next?
Uh yeah, hi, um looking forward to twenty twenty-five, I think we're gonna have a great year. Um first uh committee coming up is January sixth. Uh the library board trustees is meeting, we've got some new members, so we're very excited about next year. Um recreation committee is meeting um shortly after that, and they've got some great events, I think we're gonna fold um some. Events that made part of EDC potentially into the recreation committee, where's. We have some uh new people that are very excited about joining on the team and have some great ideas. Um that's about it for now, we're gonna come up soon, and the other committees.
When's the block party? That's what we.
Yeah, we are starting at the block party here and it's. I'll save it for the day, yeah.
David, you wanna go next?
Oh, sure. Um I think we talked about most of the water related issues going on, but I just, um. I wanna thank all of the team that we have in the borough, which is so extraordinary, both on the council on this side of the dais and the other. And um it's what really makes it worth doing, being part of all this. Um and uh you've got a lot of challenges ahead of us, you've got a lot of challenges this year. Um. It's really an exceptional group of people, the way everybody works out, get things done. And um it's very gratifying, I think, to be part of that team. So thank you all, and thank you, Krista, for being council president last year. I have some high heels to fill. I could have had a problem, but I don't know, it's me on bounce, but um but thank you. And and um and and Anthony, well, it's really great having you on board. Um we. Had some great discussions so far, and I know you're, you've got uh a lot of great skills and you're a thought person and you know, you may already so it's wonderful to have you on board. Um looking forward to it. And uh.
I didn't know some of your friends were. One of our biggest headed friends, but.
Listen, I I I I really appreciate that, thank you. You did some of my my job and um. But I also really appreciate all the work that you've done, Scott, for the Green Team. Um he's really like the uh the the motor, kind of the whole Borough affection of the Green Team, so thank you. Um so on on the Green Team and 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 I am um very, you know, I'm very pleased with all we've accomplished so far. Um and really kind of got this new momentum going, so I really invite the community. Um to anybody who might be interested in becoming a part of the momentum or not, you know, to 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 join us at Hotluck. Uh and that will be shared by the Borough email and um and social media. Um because we're really hoping to kind of, you know, just. See see where we go with that momentum. Um and then um on the EDC front, um I'm very happy to be passing the torch over to Sherry Hook. Who's not here tonight. Um but we, you know, I think we've gotten ours, we're gotten ourselves to a good place with EDC and um. We had a really productive discussion at our December meeting about getting together, you know, having a formal plan and proposal to come before council within a couple of months. And so. EDC with our shariety as well will be reporting back on that in a couple of months. Um and. You know, it's been a very, um you know, it's 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 been a good year, it's been an interesting year. Um I appreciate working with. Everyone here and and with everyone in the community. Um they administer, you know, any part. Um so thank you, everyone. Look forward to it, you know, looking forward to twenty twenty-five, I think, I hope. You know, that. I'm going to caution his optimism.
There.
Um I don't have so much to report. PDSAC met after a bit of a hiatus earlier this month or last month, I still think it's December, excuse me. So uh we have got moving forward, we're planning um more quarterly or as need, depending on how people's schedules seem to fall. So that is the update with PDSAC. Um and I said this really quickly because David is here thanking everyone else on the team, but I just need to mention like the tremendous amount of work that David puts into all of our. Water store, everything is incredible, so we really need to give him an additional thanks. And to spread a little bit more. Mayor Kennedy was here um thanking everyone, and we haven't even said anything about the work that he's done. And since we don't wanna be here till ten, I'm not gonna start discussing everything that he's done this year, but can we believe that it's only been one? Year, right? It's been to borrow, um thank you for an interesting year, right?
You might notice a lot.
Last uh six hundred months has been a really. Uh a few quick things uh from me. Um I had the collision and confusion of attending. Uh some, um I'm glad it seemed resolved, but a lot of thought um from the state perspective and the federal perspective, I guess, went into. Attempting to share some information which they did not have about the drones in our area. I um did attend and. Was befuddled by by that, but we appreciate our state government and federal government's attempts to share some information. If I had actually anything useful to share, I I would, I do not. Um.
So you shoot them down, right?
Yeah, um. I do wanna um, I wanna thank uh Doug and all of our residents who uh uh came out to the special Sunday issue they had of our coffee meetup. Um uh it's, I think that's been a success, and I'm looking forward to more conversations with everyone around the bar. I think the idea of it becoming a bit of a road tour. Um you know, with some different locations, um might be be a neat way to to connect with with more people. Uh we have a beautiful tent now, so perhaps we can do it at the park when it's warm. Uh but keep an eye on the website, we're gonna continue to do office hours um uh as as other ways to connect um with with residents, businesses. Um I I wanna appreciate and just confirm again, you know, for our our business or property or community that we're here to. To to help and to to discuss um anything involving a property that you may have. Um we don't always have the answers, um but. Um if you're really to do business in town, uh of property or a project. Um we are here, we, I mean, feel free to reach out to me or or to Doug Administrator. Um we readily meet with people looking um to do. Business in or with town, and we don't always have all of the answers, but we're here to try to help you navigate what you have, and particularly with our. Um recent, as of last month, rehabilitation designation. There are more tools that we hope to have in the future for businesses and. Uh developments, people who did invest in our town. Uh so I appreciate even this, you know, so conversations I had uh with with potential uh folks um on that, both positive and negative, I'll say. We will, we're here to talk if you have a great idea. Um uh we're also been reaching out to uh. I'll just say folks or property owners that may use a little uh little extra help in in moving their properties along. We will continue to do that. Those conversations have been um. Then I opening in and help people continue to do. Um uh one last thing, um we as a community, and I think I speak for myself and the Mercy Council, we are really committed. To being inclusive, um and being and exceeding what the state calls our obligation, but what we call our plan, frankly. This is what we, um our affordable housing in Hopeborough. Is not something we're doing because someone said we have to. It is what I believe our community and this council wants to do and continue to do and will be doing. Um. Having said that, there are some administrative things, one of which we took tonight, frankly, appointing our assessor as a. Uh opportunity to help with some of the reporting requirements that the state has that had to happen in short order. That was one of our consent items uh this evening. And uh we'll likely have a a meeting, a second meeting next month. Um we have by the end of it currently, by the end of this month, um. To respond to the administrative numbers that we have received uh from the state. Uh about our affordable housing and should be. Um and we'll be meeting hopefully the twenty-third um. Uh to uh I guess approve the steps to send or to confirm or whatever we have to do with that number back. Uh when you look at the schedule of our meetings going forward this year. Um we, our general plan is to first to continue meeting on the first Thursday of the month. There are a lot of things to do um this year. Uh so we have set into our schedule. Potential meetings. It is not our plan at the moment to meet twice a month, uh but we have set and will set. Um a series of possible dates where we might have, I'll say, a quick meeting, but possibly a a a one topic. Or a a second meeting for the month that will all be on the website and in our weekly newsletters. Um when you see the meetings. Don't immediately think it is, it is, but we don't expect to need to meet twice a month, every month, even if it looks like that. And if we do. I apologize to everyone here and uh and my family, uh but that's not the the intent, it's just to have the options going forward.
Didn't somebody say something about donuts earlier?
Oh, man, and and the donuts weren't so popular. Um so we could try bagels, donuts, um.
Maybe brownies if it's.
Brownies, um we will, uh we will keep you through all the major food groups, uh from donuts to, yeah. Yeah, as long as it's carbohydrate, I'm here, we are, we are with that. Uh so. Well, uh to that point again, uh I'm gonna also just thank, there's nothing to announce, but our our professionals and and team have been keeping an eye towards. Um things we can put in motion to make sure our businesses would have opportunities for additional licenses should they arrive. Um there's nothing to report there yet, but it is our um one of our regular efforts to make sure that we're ready should an opportunity erupt, either legislation. Um or a a possible or a license uh from another community and one of the places placed last month with a reinformation. Designation would be to open the door, prepare for one of those possibilities to support a business in town, well, with with something like that and continue to to do that. And um. So with uh with that.
Just one comment, please. Uh I I did wanna thank you for your leadership this year, and particularly just listening to the things you were just talking about. That's the stuff that people don't see. Going on in the background, and you've been carrying those status for a long time. And no, but it's and and these are all. This is all mo- movement forwards, incremental, but it's laying the groundwork for sort of more tools to improve the community, and it's something where you have quite a long skill set. So thank you for that, and thank you for your leadership this year. It's been a pretty strong year, I would say, for our new mayor, not the new mayor. Yeah, but thank you. Um really appreciate your leadership.
Thank you. Um. Uh, next, um uh Johnny, uh was like you back cleanup uh with the success stories and 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 updates from your.
I'll be, I'll be super brief. Uh the mayor mentioned uh the dark sky initiative for twenty-five. Uh Lisa and I are meeting with Mr. Ackerman on the sixth, which is Monday, to uh start formulating that, so we're taking that going. Uh on the financials, uh working with Diana, closing out twenty twenty-four, uh very tight, but make it. And as far as the dollars, um. Okay, I think. And uh also, we're in the process of building our twenty twenty budgets, like the current fund, the water utility. The sanitation from the capital budget, so we're putting those all together. And just uh another one more water item, um because of the recent rains, we've been able to get one million four back to its maximum. Once and every season, it depends on New Jersey American water.
Yep.
And I'll leave it there.
Uh one just maybe fault for me, I we've not yet set in stone, but we're thinking um the February timeframe might be uh, you know, of a many, many things we've got going in twenty-two-five. And last month, a couple of um resolutions about um implements that we owe our our DPW team uh for our public works facility and likely um. February timeframe, which we might be able to show some of those.
Yes.
To the.
Yeah, thank you, yeah. So the architect and borrower engineer will be here.
Excellent. Alright, thank you, thank you, thank you. Um. Uh absent any other comments or administrator from this side of the the dais, I'll I'll open up the meeting to the. I don't know, umpteenth um uh public comment uh uh session for those both in person. Uh and online, if you're online. Um I don't see any dial-in phones, dial-in at star nine, or push the raise end button, we'll recognize you on Zoom. Uh or if you're here in person, please come on down to the front to our uh post. Say seeing none, I'm happy to take the first motion to adjourn the meeting opening twenty-five.
Okay, Anthony, do it again.
I move.
Alright, you have a second? Yeah, thank you so much. All in favor of adjourned?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.